Katie, if you could introduce everybody, that'd be great.
Sure. Good evening or good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Katie Fitzgerald, Criminal Justice Coordinator. I am just going to introduce your work session today. The topic that you have before you today is an update on the Legal Self-Help Center, which the Commission approved for funding during the summer 2022 budget cycle to begin for FY23. The Self-Help Center opened to the public on May 1 of 2023. And I think as we were talking about updates for you all, and particularly introductions to county services for our new Commissioners, it kind of dawned on me and Sarah that in other spaces, CJCC and some of our other kind of circles within the justice system, we hear and know about Self-Help Center. But we have not probably brought it back. It's overdue time to bring back to you all for an update about the Center's operations, how it has grown over the last not-quite-two years since it opened. So we wanted to use this as an opportunity to kind of introduce the Self-Help Center to our new Commissioners and provide an update for our longer-serving Commissioners about how the Self-Help Center is operated. So your session today will be led by Brandy Brackovich, who is the Director of our Self-Help Center. We also have Linda Kestner Vogelsang, who's our Court Administrator. And I will let Brandy introduce her staff, and she's got some of her volunteers here as well.
Hello, my name is Brandy Nichols Brackovich. First thing I want to start out with is that this is a pretty text-dense presentation that is not usually my style, but I will get us through it and leave us plenty of time to discuss if I'm successful. First, I want to introduce the, my team. This is Adelaida Mendoza. She is the eviction coordinator. She was the first one we were able to add to our team through the National Center for State Court Grant for eviction diversion. The first year, it paid 100% of her salary plus the startup costs. After that, it's been 50% each budget year. And we were extended for year three. So we actually, I think, are 50% through maybe 27 into the first part of budget year 27. I have that written down. Behind me is Isabel Huckins. She is our Vista member. She is working on her PhD with K-State in organizational leadership, and we are lucky to have her. She manages, you'll see more about our volunteers, but she oversees 42 different schedules from various community members and students. And she really deserves a lot of credit. She's also building our training in which the State Office of Judicial Administration has both wanted to borrow training that Adelaida has built in addition to what Isabel has built. We have a few of their volunteers. I'm not going to call them by name because I feel like there might be one or two that would be embarrassed to be singled out. But they're all fantastic, and I'm very thankful they choose to spend their time with us. They bring a lot of joy to us, but also the people that come into self-help because who doesn't like a KU student? And our community volunteers. So that's who our team is. And really quick, we'll go through it. But the way AmeriCorps qualifies volunteer hours is by kind of the median or the income of the average employee in the area. And that's around $18. So our group has contributed $25,000 of service hours to our organization. So we're really, really excited, and we're hoping Vista stands strong. All right, next slide. This is kind of where I tried to warn you guys, if you read it before, like I know you all will, that some of this is, as I was researching and saw that we were ARPA, I just wanted to put it in the place so that it could be in the record. And I, it looks very text-dense because I wanted to put it in the same format that the Commissioners saw when they were funding ARPA. And for the Commissioners that were not part of the ARPA process, so if you're comparing the project narrative, that follows just straight down. So I'll highlight a couple of things through there. But unless you have questions, and you can ask me later, that's just kind of why it's done like that. So the population is supposed to be low- or moderate-income populations that experience unemployment, food, housing insecurity, or cannot afford an attorney. We do not actually have income restrictions. This is why we collect zip code information for you guys because we feel like that the zip codes kind of will alert you to different high-needs areas. That's also how we're going to identify gaps when we get more resources, how we're going to build into areas if there are gaps. Our 2025 intake process does have more information about age, race, gender. But in our current form, we asked it, because of the state law that was there when we built it, if they wanted to answer. A lot of people just wanted to get to the legal matter. And of the 1,400 intakes we had, only about 280 actually answered that question. So to me, it didn't feel like a big enough subset for, to help you guys. We build it a little bit different where it still has the option to not answer if you don't want to, but you're still going to go through the question. This next one is highlighting the three grants that OJA, the Office of Judicial Administration that oversees our state courts, have provided to services that operate in Douglas County. They do not ask for our input as courts. And so that is a decision by OJA to supplement what we have going on with the courts, the work that Linda Kestner Vogelsang does. I highlight that because that is one of the sustainability features that we offered in the ARPA plan. So I wanted to show you that we are working with them. This next slide is the actual grant applications that we have done. The first grant is, oh, gosh, that year three and year two are wrong on the years. I apologize. But that's the one that funds Adelaide on the top. The one on the bottom, we were not successful because it was a very large HUD grant that we were hoping that it would actually carry on for the next five years Adelaide's salary, the salary of the mediation coordinator, and any rental assistance in the form of understanding that landlords in Kansas sometimes have to give up some legal rights in order to engage with mediation. And as long as that is going towards back-to-rent, would that be something we could support? We don't even have to worry about that because we did not get it, and they're not sure about the length of that anyway now. So the next slide is the Court Volunteer Program. When we get to the volunteers that actually serve our program day in and day out, that will be in '30 to '31. We do have retired attorneys. A couple want to work with us. There has been some family issues with them. We do have one, Marilyn Harp, that gives us three at-least appointments a week. But when you have Marilyn Harp as your volunteer attorney, she used to run Kansas Legal Services. So every time she comes into the office, we learn something. The person leaves not even knowing how lucky they could have possibly had it. They just know they're happy. So we're very, very thankful. We also worked with the Office of Judicial Administration to go ahead and get the one day a week from Kansas Legal Services that can help people that are coming in with limited legal advice. They had to use an attorney from another office out of Kansas City, Kansas, to do that. But their Topeka branch director attorney or supervising attorney has really stabilized, got them full. And so we're, we're already building in 2025 and 2026 for some exciting partnerships.
Brandy, I have a quick question about that before the thought leaves me. You mentioned that because of OJA, you have that KLS attorney one day a week. Can you expand on that?
Yes, I can. So the Access to Justice Grant that also covered the eviction, those three other grants, one of the major things it funds is Kansas Legal Services and Self-Help Center hours. And we had not had those previously because the Topeka was severely understaffed, and we couldn't do that. So we worked with them. Kansas Legal Services worked with us, and we were able to go ahead and implement that one day a week through that grant that already exists for self-help centers and get it in place before Topeka got fully staffed. Topeka just got fully staffed, I think, about a month ago. So did that answer the question? Perfect. All right, next slide. Okay, so this is where we kind of get into the meat of the matter. Again, this is kind of, I don't, I don't feel like I need to read slides, and I don't want to bore you if there's something you want to see. The biggest thing I want to highlight in here is that, as an attorney, I can make this joke, it does not harm any attorneys because we are not to take the place of an attorney. We can't provide legal advice. We are rather trying to simplify the process so the individual has a chance of justice in a court system that is not built for people without attorneys. So I promise, we did not harm any attorneys in the building of our Self-Help Center. Oh, yeah, I forgot. This is Self-Help Centers benefit all because the top two, the accessible legal resources and guidance and finding and completing the accurate paperwork, when that is not a self-help center, that falls solely on the clerk's office, that is already managing our court record, making sure it's efficient. There's a lot of work that goes there. So when the self-represented litigants don't understand what to do, there's a lot of carrying that weight in the clerk's office that reduces the inefficiencies by repeating the visits and unnecessary hearings and the access to justice. And finally, the amount of times a person has to leave work. Those are all court efficiencies. I think those are very important with the commitment the Commission has and the generosity it's shown. But also, those are business considerations. An employee needs to be at work. The judge needs to be able to know that at a hearing time, that hearing's going to be scheduled and not continue to get backlogged. So that's my summary. And this is just a quick gap. What does it look like with us and without us, the backbone? Yeah. So the justice gap is one of those things that has just been released a couple of months ago. 92% of low American incomes don't have access to the justice system through legal services or being able to hire an attorney. Many individuals don't even know their problem is legal. We were presented about like 80%, but I couldn't find it, so I didn't want to provide it to you. But it is above 75% that don't know their issue is even legal in nature. So 92% of the 25% cannot access legal resources. So this isn't something that Kansas Legal Services or pro bono work is going to get us completely out of. We're going to have to really think about these self-help type models and other innovations. And without the guidance, they make avoidable mistakes like we just talked about. And that is the citation for that. That's a legal services corporation.
Can you give us an example of something that may be a legal issue that people don't know is a legal issue?
So for example, in our, one thing that happens quite frequently here is that you invited a guest to come to your apartment. They refused to leave. The guest either got a key or knew to transfer their mail to your apartment, and now you've got to do an illegal eviction to get them removed. Some people don't have any idea that that is even an opportunity. Some people don't understand that you have to file a parentage action in order to get child support. They think the parent is on the birth certificate, so there's nothing else that needs to be done. So those are kind of the issues. You're welcome. Next. So I found this very interesting because we're always talking about low income, and what does that mean, especially with HSC and different funders and when they can fund and when they cannot. For the purposes of LSC, the highlighted numbers mean low income. So these are the people in Douglas County that fit in the 92% that cannot access legal resources due to finances or other reasons.
Brandy, you mentioned that you're not income restricted in who you're serving in this program.
No. We have talked as a court that if there was ever a constraint for resources and a real problem, maybe that's something we would need to look at. But right now, we're hoping it just builds so much efficiency for the court in and of itself that we don't worry as much about income. We worry more about how can we take care of cases and make sure people on the other side of those cases can get their justice handled quickly.
I just want to clarify, is that both for like the use, is that sort of applies to all uses of the Self-Help Center? So an appointment with one of those volunteer attorneys, for example, one of those three slots a week that you mentioned as an example, or I suppose with KLS, it's a little bit different in that they still have to go through an application process of some sort with their organization rather than just a direct referral. But can you just help me know if there's any limits to that?
Yep. So when KLS or our volunteers are serving the self-help hours, they do fill out the formal application, but there is no income constraint. They will see, as long as there's not a conflict, that person to provide limited legal advice. The provider for the OJA grant, Access to Justice, has different numbers, and so they screen theirs differently. But we don't screen for that. If they ask for that, we provide it, and we let the other team tell us if they can't take him on because grants change, and we don't know if they can fall under other things because that team is very willing to take the case as long as they have the funding. All right, next. So these are just kind of civil legal needs, and they're not so much, we need to talk much about them. There are a couple I would like to draw your attention to. Those are specifically the mechanic's liens and quiet title. I must, did I put that up there? Mechanic's liens are something that comes through our office. But we do feel like if we could do a guided interview or really ramp up our website presence, a lot of those are going to be able to happen without us because once they come into the office, they're very simple. So that's one place where we feel like we could really serve people better by being more web-based. But we will still serve them, and we won't eliminate them from coming in. Quiet title of vehicles is the same. Those come into play when you have a car hobbyist. They buy an antique car from out of state. It was registered there. It's not here. In a college town, it's where college kids buy cars off of Facebook, find out the person before them never registered the title. So now they got official, they must officially quiet the title in order to get it registered. Those are both. The quiet title is really pretty simple if you have a good guided interview to move it through. So the quiet title, the web or a tech solution would need to be in person, but both, if it were on the website, we would probably see very little. Not that we don't want to see them, but the easier it is to get the information, we want to support that. I had met Jill in my previous life with suspended driver's licenses. That's a passion of mine that was shared with Jill. Oh, that's, yes, I'm sorry. No, no assistant county administrator was suspended, and no attorneys were harmed in this presentation. But yes, so that is something we're very passionate. And in fact, I'm just, because Judge McCabrey asked me to pat myself on the back a little bit, the SLIP project that you hear statewide about suspended licenses, that was actually my build with American Rescue Plan Acts funded by the Health Department in Kansas City, Kansas. So I bring that as much as I can in order to support, without legal advice, that assistance. Next. So the different ways we help is we try to provide clear instructions and checklist to make it easy. We really try to help the self-represented people or litigants, I prefer persons, have all the forms they're going to need at that first meeting with us. So we, if we will tell them, if you have time, we are going to sit down. It's going to take us about an hour and a half. But when you leave and walk down to the clerk's office, every form you need for your first hearing and for the judge to grant your divorce, if you agree, is in the clerk's and the judge's hands. So we do that because, again, it's going to reduce the costs, the efficiencies. The judges are ready to handle that case when it touches them. This is Harris, one of our volunteers. He is now going to KU Law or will be the next year. Next. Okay, I love this, this little guy. And I want to take just a quick second to thank our Court Administrator because she ensures that we have enough space as we grow while also ensuring that we have enough space to add a kids' area. So our volunteers, as they can probably nod their head, have eaten more imaginary weird food combos than you can imagine at our kitchen that was provided by Linda. Oftentimes, we have a gallery of pictures that have been drawn for us, things like that. And it's just a really lovely way for us to be able to support that parent is there. We can't take the trauma away. That's not appropriate. But we can help the kid feel safe and entertained so they get a second to think about their legal issues. So that is something that Linda has really supported us on, and in the new build, it stays in there as well. All right, so this is something we can go, let's see, 422. This is Slide 16. I have a few minutes built in, but this is just kind of to go through. The first step in any court hearing is the basic paperwork. You can start a divorce with a petition and a civil cover sheet. Civil cover sheet's just their information. They get the first hearing date, but unless there's a self-help, it really sits on the clerk's office to try not to give legal advice, but try to support people knowing there's other documents. So hopefully, they come up to us for step two. These are all the forms that they actually need. Each one of those forms represents a chance for a hearing to get rescheduled. While I'm talking about this, can you go to the next slide? If that were the one I, oh, shoot, next one. Anyway, I have a fun slide coming. So I think you saw there are like 16 forms that have to be there. Now, if you come see us, we can get all of those done knocked out in one time. But that's, that's what we're navigating at a very, one of our most used services for divorce. Next. So this is where the path diverges. We talked about the incomplete forms. Those of you that aren't familiar with legal world, it's basically a status conference is a waiting room. And you just get rescheduled to a new waiting room, month to month, until you have everything you need done. So if you go to the next slide, what we do is move them have everything done before that so that it doesn't look like the picture on the right for the person trying to take care of their justice system. We try to do a straight and clear path that you saw earlier. Next. So finalizing this divorce. So these steps, we're actually using a divorce where everybody agrees, even with children. That happens quite a bit. And so we can actually have that, help that family be ready to finalize at their 60-day date if, by having all of this done with them because they already agree, we prep them for what they're going to need, and they're ready to go. If it's not, or a judge has one more thing, then they might need a second appearance for 90 days, but that's still much shorter than it had been. And our goal is if the other party is represented and we have a party that is not, that that attorney is saying, "Thank goodness you went to self-help," because it should also save the other litigant money by having access to our, our system. And I stopped reading from my slides. All right, so this next slide, this is where we, do you have any questions about the other stuff? Because now we're kind of just getting into Douglas County. So this is the number of people we serve. This is, I have to be careful how I say this because I grew up close to Oklahoma. These are the numbers that can be audited. That's what I want to say. There are 1,420 intakes that were fully submitted. They were voicemails that we have registered for 192, and we have self-help emails for 239 that I could recreate for you right away. Why that is important is we serve many, many more people because serving the person is more important than collecting the data for us. So many people come in high alert situations, protection orders in the family world or parentage. So I just kind of wanted to give you an idea that those are the numbers we can recreate. I'd also like to highlight, we didn't open full-time until April 1 of this year. Some of the other things to consider, what is served means, that gives you a little bit more specific. Some of our off-site locations that we had served, right now, those are sort of on hiatus. Those numbers don't include repeat visitors for the same issue, and oftentimes, not even repeat visitors for separate issues. Once they come to us, they usually continue to come to us. It doesn't, the evictions, collections, persons at limited-action docket, again, those are high-stress, high-time-moving, removing people and worrying about data second. And by all persons at the protection-order docket, we do check in the protection-order docket. There was a little break, but that's what we do. And through that, we do occasionally get some self-help questions. We're not going to have time to track those, and we're just happy to provide information. And there are times where even though we have four computers, they're all in use, and we just need to get people served. This is who we are. I am the Director. I am also an attorney. I do not provide legal advice or representation. I'm there to assure we never get close to providing legal representation because that could very seriously harm somebody that was coming into self-help. And that's kind of just a breakdown of the funding. So again, it can kind of be in one place. And the Court Navigator job is getting posted tomorrow because I have one follow-up question from Linda. But we're super excited to bring them on board. Next. These are the zip codes that I talked about. Now, I didn't do a very good job of isolating the zip codes that are in the pie chart from being represented in the graph. So for other DG zip codes, that is 606, or the ones that are included. Anyway, I'm going to spend more time explaining that, and you guys can probably scan that much more quickly. The one thing we did find really interesting is that out-of-county, out-of-state at 14%. Now, a lot of those are limited actions, evictions, or parenting plans that need to be corrected. But a lot of those just heard that Douglas County has illegal self-help and wondered if they could come use us to file their case. We can't do that, but we can provide them to the Kansas Judicial Council. We can let them know how to contact their district court to find that out. So I consider that a compliment and something to kind of ferret out a little bit more. Do you guys have any questions about the zip codes?
I do. You mentioned having some off-site locations that maybe aren't happening now but had been. Can you just talk about where you've been?
Absolutely. So we've been to the library, Lawrence Public Library. There, that went swimmingly. We did have an incident where one of our volunteers let me know that she felt not unsafe because she felt like she was armed with the talent to defend herself, but felt uncomfortable. So I had to remind her, no, 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 we don't expect a volunteer to, to use self-defense when doing that. And it will be a simple fix. What the date that that volunteer could go in, there were no managers scheduled to work that night. So we just need to get plugged back in and make sure it's a night that a manager is there so she has a number to call if she feels unsafe. We were also at Haskell Light. They are a student organization that serves the Haskell University. And we did not go back there this first, this school year because we were waiting to get through. They asked us to wait till October or so. And then we got busy onboarding. And then we got busy onboarding. And then right now is probably not... We made a decision that, you know, the news we got is probably not the right time. They likely have other focuses. But I do plan reaching back out to them. We work very, very well with Pula. She's lovely. She even had her mom bring us a can of salmon for the work that we had done by showing up. We also use the opportunities and want to continue to build out to Haskell, which is why our volunteer department is so important so that we can get out of the office a little bit and build those community connections because we want our volunteers to come from all of the universities in our county. And we want future lawyers to come from all of our universities in the county. We actually, at a self-represented litigant, had made inroads with a fellowship that connects people or students that want to be law students this summer before their senior year... Or yes, as they go through law school because... Or undergrad because they feel like they can get someone a law school scholarship if they will give them five years. Again, we're just growing really, really fast. And it would have been a little bit irresponsible for me to then focus on that and not spend some time really securing our own foundation. My goal is if everything goes... All funding goes away, or you guys decide heck with Self-Help Center and Brandy, that whatever we build will outlive me. And so I'm lucky to have that support with Linda. So right now, it's really trying to find that balance with Adalita, Isabel, myself, to figure out how to do both of those.
And those were the two off-site locations that you were at? When you had the Haskell Light Center open, was it mostly Haskell students that were being served there? Or was the broader neighborhood also?
It was the broader neighborhood also. And in fact, one of the greatest compliments we received is one of the employees at Haskell Light offered to make fry bread for one of our hosted sites to draw more people in. And I was not able to go for the fry bread, but I heard it was very well-attended and that I should have been able to go for the fry bread. So that to us, we accepted that huge compliment as a welcoming into their space to serve them. Next. I tried to be fancy in a text since PowerPoint. These are the type of cases we serve. As you would expect, we're primarily family. Secondarily are protection orders. Those aren't the protection order docket check-ins. Those are people that come to seek specifically protection orders. And then we refer those to Willow and go back and forth. And we have some plans to further get as much training around those protection orders for safety planning at Light so we can give enough information that will span a gap until they can get that done properly from Willow or their victim advocate. The others, landlord, tenant, collections, and then the other civil you see are just kind of all over. Probate is a small estate affidavit. So if you have an estate, if your loved one had an estate of less than $40,000... Is it up now? $75,000 now? All they need to do is do a small estate affidavit, provide that to their bank, to the landlord to collect their stuff, the registration. So we have helped people from New Zealand and Australia and other states with those. And guardianships, well, I actually isolated them so they don't hear. In a true... If you were to see a true state report on probate, that would also include guardianship and conservatorship. I wanted to break it out for you guys so you could see it. And next. This is Adalita, so we're going to go a quick... We're going to go quick... Oh, I think we're doing pretty good on time. We're going to do a quick dive into the eviction resolution program. This could be an entire work session on its own. We are so fortunate that Adalita came in to work with this. We are... Because we are a court program. We serve both landlords and tenants. Now, under the Limited... Or the Landlord-Tenant Act, landlords that are LLCs must be represented by an attorney. Those that are not LLCs can use our space. So those are those mom-and-pops. And there are times where the landlord themselves has less social-cultural resources than the tenant. So it is a need to be able to provide at least the process. Also, we believe that a landlord armed with really good process makes a better experience for a tenant. So to us, helping everybody really, really is the same thing. So we cannot... Anything that comes through the state or through the court cannot have a preference. So we cannot have a right-to-counsel-specific attorney that we fund. A right-to-counsel that represents tenants can serve in our court. If we were funding or we are recruiting for that, it must be somebody that can handle both. Mom-and-pop landlords and the tenants. The other 14 are kind of what I talked about earlier. Those are the people where a guest has overstayed or a guest has sent the mail before asking to stay, got a key, and now the police cannot remove that person. And it's not unusual. We have some interesting reports, but the person is actually allowed to break into the landlord's apartment to regain space until an eviction is filed. So that is also why we're very passionate about saving some landlord spot because those are landlords under the law. So the total that has been served by intakes, 268 for the year, which is not... Do I have the next slide? Which is not real far off from the number of people that appeared. So we did see a 12% decrease in the writs of restitution, or better known as eviction orders. As a court program, we are never seeking one specific outcome versus the other. However, what a decrease in writ of restitution tells us is that more people availed themselves of the legal process. So they knew there was a legal process. And this helps the attorneys also mediate with the tenants if they're willing. I mean, there's no guarantee. There is a power structure there, correct? But we do... They do work out cases there, which is essentially... There's some formality around the Johnson County, but that's essentially the outcomes of the Johnson County eviction is they are mediating before the trial and after the denial of the petition for eviction. As you can see, yeah, I think the numbers speak for themselves. And 20... They're pretty good. Next. We would always like them to be better, but she has been in this program for one year. And we... Just a reminder, we were fighting flood, fire, cybersecurity during that year. Here are the eviction filings for dismissal orders. Again, we don't have any outcome that we represent over as a court, and our grant forbids it. However, what this represents is two judges that take their duty very seriously to manage their dockets. In those cases that are stagnant, meaning they haven't... None of the actions have happened in the required period of time are dismissed. So that means that they need to go... It's always better not to have an eviction filed on your record, correct? Because in a legal case, once a court filing occurs, anybody can look up your name and they can find that out. So it's better not for a tenant to have an eviction ever filed. But it is definitely better if they do to see a dismissal. So we are very excited about that number with the dismissal order because those are just naturally better outcomes from the process itself.
Do you have further breakdown and some more aggregate data about the different types of dismissal and reasons? So it says that, you know, a 15% increase in dismissal orders. And you're highlighting that you believe that that's due to a lot of inactive cases being closed out and sort of the administrative work of that. But do you have more aggregate data on the other types of dismissals?
No, the dismissals that you have are the Odyssey reports. And we were not in a spot for 2024, being new, to be able to hand count. It really takes hand tallying the other dismissals. However, that is what that dismissal means. Like when the clerk's recorded, that's actually how it's recorded. So the percentage of dismissal orders... I think these dismissal orders are directly reflecting the stagnant orders. And the percent of dismissal orders in totality, that represents 64%. The other stuff is hard because they are not represented by an attorney. The court record is on a recording, and it literally is just trying to piecemeal it right now. We do have our Kansas Career Work Study working directly with Adalita now, and we hope to increase having more information. We also have a... That came out in January 1, a more specific collection of data specifically in landlord tenants. So when we do an intake, one of the attorneys that serves us is someone who has had to use community resources and just reflected that it felt terrible to have to continually trade her private information for community resources. So we are really, really trying to build a branching system where you only answer a question if we need to have it for your purposes or a grant purpose. We also, when we build it, we use KIWI-T. So we do say things if somebody else is collecting this, if the health department, if Gabby at HSC, and they're collecting something similar using a specific language, let us know. We're happy to collect it that way in case in the future, there's an ability to blend all that information for Jill's purposes, Gabby's purposes. So we do try to be progressive, even though that's not where we're at yet.
Okay, just to clarify, just the information I'm more interested in, I think, would come from Odyssey. And as I understand it, and I don't know the status quo because it's been a long time since I looked up information on OJA's site, but the report about evictions that was produced a couple of years ago, part of the recommendations statewide were to... It was around making some changes to forms in part, but also making sure that Odyssey, now that that's statewide, had updated fields, basically, in ways of tracking more nuanced data. So just in the...
That has not been done yet.
Got it. I'd love to know if and when you receive the memo that it moves on.
We absolutely will. We work very close with OJA. And OJA also works... So we were the second year of the National Center for State Court Funding for Eviction. State of Kansas was first. They put their program in Sedgwick County as part of the ad hoc committee and the recommendations because it was the largest. We got the second one. Johnson County was up and going. Our model is specifically different because we're trying to work as a state, both because that's what we do and to show in case there's any chance for funding to bring us in from the state that we're working as state partners already. And we work very closely with Abigail, which is the Adalita's partner. And they don't have any different reports than we do. So everybody in the state's living in the same report. Yep. And is there another slide? So this is... Oh, yeah, this is Adalita still. Her impact goes way beyond numbers. So for self-help, we're kind of... You came in, you asked a question, there we go. Adalita is not a case manager in the way that she's a constant resource, and she provides some of those more therapeutic connections. She is a case manager in the terms somebody wants to tell them how great their life is going. They think they can't pay again. How to prepare them, even if they're evicted, for their next unrental to make sure they have the things they need. And is really working to coordinate... We believe if we're bringing in Kansas Legal Services, KHD through the OJA, the Building Peace mediation, that those are the specialists. So their time is better served actually giving legal advice. So Adalita builds efficient systems to provide as much information as we can. So when we hand that off, that person that is providing the professional service is only worrying about the professional service. Do you have a question?
I think I just wanted to... Not taking anything away from the successes that were on the charts, the charts there a couple of slides back, is just, I think, acknowledging also that the role of HSC funding that the county has made available, the rent and utility assistance funding is a really important factor in resolving a lot of these as well. So I think I just want to, you know, make sure we're acknowledging that there could be a variety of factors at play here. And the availability of that rent and utility assistance funding to prevent an eviction is key. And when you look at the... At some of the set-asides and ways of prioritizing how HSC is awarded for households that are at risk of being evicted, it's at play. And then I also just wanted to acknowledge that there's other partners like Kansas Holistic Defenders that are doing some of this work as well. So I think it's just, yeah, it's a real collaborative effort.
Correct. And they are. But I want to make sure because it is so confusing in the space when somebody's in multiple areas. I... Until this last part, I wasn't referring to anyone by name because they are contractors. And so just to kind of understand that contract space and how that goes. The referral comes in, they support, they choose who they're going to recommend. But the situation is still the same. Whoever fills that, we're going to do all of the background work that we can for them. I do want to reiterate that Douglas County is known in these national circles for having rental assistance and HSC funds. And that is really what we... In a perfect 10,000-mile world that we don't have to worry about anything, we would like to get landlords and tenants used to coming to us earlier in the process and getting stabilized earlier in the process because oftentimes landlords have worked for months and months, and the frustration is there, and there's not enough honey to get those two people together. So I do want to make sure and reflect that she is correct. When you get in any other space... Well, obviously, she's correct. She's smarter than I am on these things. But when you get into the self-represented litigant access to justice, you guys really get a gold star for having that rental assistance available.
Brandy, I'd want to ask something since you responded to that. You mentioned that you didn't mention those entities by name earlier due to them being contractors.
I misspoke there.
What do you mean by that?
Yeah, they're grant funders outside of us. We don't... We don't... We don't advocate specifically to the grant funder for them. They ask for those projects themselves. If they get funded, we try to be as efficient as we can. But in order to do... Because there's a lot of confusion about which space, and all of those people serve different ones. We... I'm happy to say KHD is the one that got the grant, and Building Peace has... We have money for landlord-tenant mediation that we're starting right now through an OJA grant to Building Peace. But since those aren't in our control, I prefer not to worry about whether, on our part, whether that is, who that is because we don't advocate, we don't deny, and it's really outside of our control. So that's why I considered it that way.
Okay, thanks for expanding on that. And I guess I just want to thank Jill for your point. And I... Some of my questions in earlier slides that I sort of let pass by are similar to this, so I'll just go back to that point now. You know, I'm curious to know both anecdotally, but also if any of the way that you track data in terms of the different types of referrals you make to either the attorney, you know, the KLS attorneys that are working within the office through some of those grants, but also the external referrals that you make just to community resources, whether it's for representation such as at KHD or for the rental assistance specific to an eviction case with HSC. Like, I'm interested in understanding more about that data, about your work with community partners outside of the district court. So I don't know if that's information that you already have, but I'd be interested in that in the future. And that's something that this commission has talked about a lot in recent years, in particular, like really... Like really, um, trying to make sure that we've got a grasp on how the different community partners, many of which are being funded by us in one way or another substantially, or, or maybe, um, less significantly in some partners' instances. But to understand how those partners are working together, what the referral directions look like, um, what is working or what is challenging about those processes. Like for, for future conversation, I'm interested to understand more about that. And in terms of, as you're wrapping your head around what to be tracking around, I'd say in particular related to evictions and the eviction coordination program, those sort of referrals and how they, I know that you can't reach any conclusions about what the data says, but I'm interested in seeing those different pieces of information in part related to how dismissals might be defined. Not just the, um, the significant number that might be related to inactivity, but the ones that are dismissed due to a settlement, an agreement being reached. An attorney representing a tenant who has been able to successfully get it dismissed due to technical issue, you know,
So those dismissals.
Those types of things. I just want to be clear that
Yeah.
Those are things that I am personally interested in. I, and I think that this commission has talked about wanting to understand what some of those outcomes might look like. We can draw our own sort of conclusions about those. It's not about asking you to draw conclusions or assign positivity or negativity to the outcomes, but to understand on a little bit more of a granular level. And if many of the dismissals are because a settlement was reached because that failure to pay rent was the issue and that got resolved because of HSC dollars, that's helpful for us to understand. And I, I'm not sure where to look for that information.
Well, so that is one of the difficult parts about getting that granular. So when we, so there are a couple of different things. First, every time a sheriff serves a summons for a petition of eviction, a resource sheet goes out that has QR codes to HSC. It has QR codes to Adalita, it specifies an order who they should, if you only have so much time, these are the most important things you need to do. And on the back, it has icon, best practices, resources. So in those situations, we would never know. We did ask, um, HSC if they had noticed an increase in applications because part of the limited actions when you come to self-help is we assist getting and applying for an attorney, taking the Kansas Legal Services application as well in case KHD can't serve them. And we put them in front of an HSC. Um, and in that conversation, it was, it was not visibly seen either. But that kind of is to be expected if we have 268 people coming and the number of resources. So we can build into that, that's kind of what I'm talking about with the referral. The other thing in here is that the limited action docket lasts 30 minutes. And to get the granular information, we are going to try, but it would require putting a volunteer in every individual eviction hearing to hand record what was happening. Because those outcomes aren't always in the actual court record. You know, a lot of times that's just agreed by settlement. That's what the judge, that's what the court record reflects, and we don't have any idea what that means. So definitely that is an area we continue to look for and we agree wholeheartedly. The other complicating factor is that when we refer someone to an attorney, that attorney, we know because KHD got the Attorney General's opinion, cannot confirm or deny if, if information, if they provided or represented them. Now, I think they're looking to work and see if they can ask for permission. But again, that is one of the areas their attorney was very passionate about, not expecting their clients to trade information for support. So we'll continue to build, but I just want to let you know.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to put a pin in that conversation because I know you have more slides to get through and I don't want to bogart all the time, but TBD.
All right, next.
And I do have a question for you.
Yeah.
So you did mention that, uh, you don't advocate, you don't advocate on behalf of your partners. It sounds like for them to receive funding, is that what I heard?
In the OJA sphere.
In the OJA sphere, okay. So when you do have partners that come to you, do you often write letters of support?
We can if they ask. We go through the judge because we're a court to make sure it meets the strict requirements of the judge for propriety, and then we can.
Okay, all right. So like for the example that you gave for Building Peace, they have a grant with KDHE, it sounds like? Okay.
Oh, they have it, well, so they have multiple grants. The one that we work with them on is the Office of Judicial Administration.
Okay, so in like a case like that, maybe there would have been a letter of support?
No, actually on that one, I don't believe there was. What we actually was very fortunate is they applied, they being Building Peace, to do juvenile mediation and some of, a criminal-based mediation that mediators aren't technically, but it's very confusing. Mediators don't go into the criminal space. So rather than the Office of Judicial Administration pulling that funding and saying, hey, we'll approve it to here, you can't use it, they moved it over and allowed it to be used in landlord tenant eviction mediations.
Okay. And with the other grants that you receive, or I guess my first question is, do you receive other grants for the work that you do?
So we do the National Center for State Court Grant. And how we actually got to get that grant was Gabby and I partnered together in what was called a Right to Counsel Sprint. That opens up grant, um, opportunities. We wrote that grant proposal together. And so that's how that grant came.
And for your other grants that you received, do you report on those grants? Like data collection that you capture and you report out for those grants?
Yes, and we just, January 1, the reporting, we got that built and we haven't sent the first quarter yet. But yes, we will be expected to.
Okay, and so for some of the reporting that you're doing for some of your other grants, will there be any opportunities for complimentary data reporting? So for what, for example, Commissioner Reed is asking for, I'm wondering if there's any opportunities for collaboration? So in response to what you're asking for, right? So could there be something built out that Commissioner Reed is asking for because you are already reporting for some other grants? And maybe on some of the other grants that you're actually reporting on, there might be other entities that you're already partnering with and maybe some of that information can be pulled into those grants and can be used.
When we do, and that's what our attention, when we say, when we're asking to build, is so that all of those reports will go and match. We, 2025, we're also collecting ALIS data and different things. So yes, any type of grant report that we are collecting for any purpose, we can definitely collaborate with, um, with the county on that so long as it's approved by Judge McCabry. Because there are some data statistics that we are allowed to collect internally only, but are not meant to be out into the public is sort of my understanding. So we have to walk a very tight line. But that is not to restrict data. We're always on transparency and sharing data where we can. But there are some times that his hands are tied by statute.
Okay, absolutely, but when we take a look at funding, yes, okay, thank you.
All right, so this is Isabel, still here with our volunteers. So this is the actual numbers for the Vista program. We have actively recruited 47 volunteers. They, 42 are able to work with us because of the time. Um, they serve both here for self-help and the law library. So I believe the library, law library was able to extend a couple of hours because of our volunteers. Um, that totals 874 hours. Now, that doesn't mean that they're here, that 40 hours a week is covered for self-help because it's completely dependent on their schedules. Some semesters, all the shifts are covered. Other semester, semesters, everybody's available on Friday, but nobody is available on Tuesday. Well, literally that was last semester. Um, so this is the economic value of their service and their volunteer time. And that is the collection period. Isabel started with us on September 1st and we are reporting through December 31st. So, deadline. Um, and this is the coming soon that we kind of touched on for the Court Navigator. Their specific responsibilities will be determined in a collaborative space. Um, and it's to identify specific opportunities, much to Commissioner Anderson's, um, question, to improve efficiency, reduce delays, make sure this is court, but really to make sure the dollars in the system really go the furthest. This also allows us to dig in where there are not data reports yet through Odyssey to see if there are some hand tallying that we can do in an efficient manner until those reports exist. So that is really going to focus what we're hoping to start gather, gathering with the clerk's office and, um, different reports is, hopefully we'll be able to show you, hey, before the Court Navigator in whatever, divorce without children, we were able through the Court Navigator to reduce the number of appearances it take. It used to take four, now it takes 3.1. And that's the type of data we, in addition to these other resources, obviously, and trying to grab those, those are the things we feel like you need for funding decisions to really see that it, we are lucky, we have a commission that focuses on helping people in access to justice. But at the end of the day, we are all stewards of taxpayers' money and we want to make sure we're providing you the information you need if you need to explain to somebody why you're using their money on that. That being said, I have a couple of personal stories. And I have two different stories. One in small estate affidavits and another in a child support adjustment that had to happen, where they said, it makes it a joy to pay our county property taxes this year knowing that some of it is going here. Not even kidding. Um, we also had a gentleman that insisted on personally thanking us, brought our volunteers donuts because he was employed in the law enforcement sphere. There was a need to adapt a child support to reflect the amicable decision to split parenting. And by coming in and using our resources, it saved him $1,200 a month. So of course we got obvious praise. I, I promised I would say some personal stories, so those are kind of like to the tax points. And that's how we want to be considered. If people use us, they can say, oh, thank you for committing our dollars to that. Next. And you survived. Now you just get to ask questions.
As you noticed, we ask questions all the way through.
Yeah, that's fine.
But I'll, I'll have one. I know you have a lot of volunteers. Can you run through like what volunteers are allowed to do and what they're not allowed to do and what qualifications you need for that?
Yes, so we will. Volunteers are not allowed to provide legal information. They are not expected to make decisions that require discernment, meaning you have to know the process to know where to go next. There's always a supervisor available for that. Um, so they are basically the forms, um, when to ask for help, um, how to direct someone, ask if they need, they want to handwrite it, print it, and just provide a little bit of emotional support and explaining what it is. Um, they are actively seeking more information about community resources so they can understand what is available and that will be part of the training. I don't know what that will look like as far as them actually providing that resource. And, but that is some of what they do. Um, yeah, that's kind of where they are right now.
I had a question from a constituent, do you have to be 18 to volunteer?
Oh, that, you asked who could do it. So you come, the way we build our volunteer experience, if you want to volunteer with us and you can be professional and you understand that even though it's not confidential, you don't understand how to be confidential, we will take you at the level that you are at to volunteer. We want you to feel like you're part of the system too. That is really important to Linda. So Isabel will train you to make sure you have the accommodations. I, um, there's a court background check and there is a model where they actually are moving self-help centers into high schools. And that is an area that, um, I would like to expand because with the proper training and the oversight there, there is no reason with what Kansas Judicial Council has and with what we provide that a high school volunteer could not. So that is in my world that I'm seeking, which also connects up with that program that I was talking about, the fellowship. Yeah, so go ahead and send them and I'll ask Linda. Any?
I didn't want to take any of the commissioner's time, but I did want to. We're some very proud of the staff and all that they accomplish. But also just letting you know, um, with Adalita's skillset and speaking fluent Spanish, how important that has been to our constituents here in Douglas County who show up and literally have no English. And so the rest of us are on our translator trying to help and Adalita takes the time necessary to help them. And so kudos to everyone, but special thanks to that added benefit.
And that's an emotional burden too, on top of, yeah.
Question, you know, this funding is mostly ARPA-funded. And, and so I'm not really concerned about, you know, the number, the 14% of out-of-state or out-of-county because those are federal dollars. But I'd be interested in hearing your thoughts beyond 2026 if we wanted to continue it. What are your thoughts about serving those out of county or even out of state if the dollars were just Douglas County funded?
So it's something that, that's exactly why we try to collect the data we do. That's what we want to look at and really be able to dig in and see who we're serving. If it's a Douglas County case and that's where, it's a governing children and that's where the case stays, I think it is appropriate because that's a Douglas County case. Unless both parties and we can get them in front of attorney and provide some legal advice on how it may be better to transfer that to a different jurisdiction. I do think it is something that the focus should be primarily on Douglas County. If you're not Douglas County, next, it should be a Douglas County case. But I want to be able to bring you more data and after we've looked at it and really kind of when you have to make those tough decisions, or we do, we can have the information behind that.
I know offsite locations are probably a lot of trouble to staff and manage and everything, but would you consider some of our other towns for locating an offsite?
Yes, so we have people that would love to go. We want to send people. Right now, it's just a matter of having the full-time staff be able to answer and support all of those questions. And whether that looks like maybe when we start going out to outreaches, doing the first week we're in family and the second week we're this, evictions always, right? So trying to really think about how to best expand out quickly while serving those. But no, we, we're very passionate that we are Douglas County, we are not just Lawrence. Um, the original AmeriCorps worker we had last year was part of a connection that was supposed to help us connect to the libraries and other places that didn't work out quite as it was planned by all three of them changing. But yes, we definitely want to go and try to figure out and go to the city councils and to the community resources to see, um, what that looks like from the experience of the people serving. But yeah, we want to get out there. Thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners?
I'm just going to make a request, doesn't need a response right now. Um, and I might have some follow-up requests for more information. I'd be interested in the, um, the templates or just the sort of blank forms that are currently used. So you mentioned like what goes out with the summons locally and the resource information. I'd like to see that. And then also I tried finding information through OJA about their like vision for self-help centers statewide. I can't find a lick about it on the internet. So if you have any information to share, I'm curious.
Um, so they are currently building that and, um, anything that OJA does requires all the judges in the legislature to move. So we are allowed to move a little more quickly. By you funding us, we can specifically target Douglas County, but we are constantly working with OJA to make sure any statewide. The next thing on OJA for self-help centers coming is to build an e-filing portal, um, for self-represented litigants in the beginning area. But I can contact Sarah Hoskinson, she's in charge of access to justice, and see if there's something I can provide that makes sense so that you guys can see how we try to tag that in. Quite honestly, we're usually, Sarah's thinking, telling us, we're thinking about a project. Are you thinking about this project? And we Are you thinking about this project? And we, Linda can probably better answer that question.
I was just going to add that one of OJA's goals is to improve their website because I think we've all shared, it's very difficult for constituents to access and find information that's relevant to what they're looking for. And they are committed to it. So it's just a matter of how long that will take. But we'll reiterate your concerns because I've said it many times, but sometimes when they hear from a commissioner, that adds its own weight.
Yeah, absolutely. And we can pass that along. I do know they're about to launch one where you, and it will send you to a self-help website if they have one. We also plan to do more with our self-help website and have eviction too. So you'll see more of that. But yeah, I'll get that information for you.
And that's kind of a kudos to our county IT. They're extremely helpful when we request something. And I know that they're overburdened with every other department, but sometimes when we're like, please and thank you, they're very helpful.
The one thing I just, because I promised, this is very uncomfortable for me. I don't like to explain what role I play. But just kind of as a background, I used to be a municipal court judge for a large area, and my passion is to find the efficiencies and collect to see where we can't duplicate. And so this is my, what I try to bring as a skillset is somebody that has worked with local government for like 19 years, understand what you need for your decisions, not be frightened of tough decisions, and try to build you the efficiency that's going to serve the access to justice as well as you. Because quite frankly, efficiencies cannot really be efficiencies unless they serve everyone. So if there's a gap for the self-represented litigant, the overall system is failing too. Not failing, no, 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 you know, but is struggling. And so that is one of the things that when I was looking for a change and this came, I felt really fortunate that I was able to kind of get out of the day-to-day grind of guilty, not guilty, guilty, not guilty, and really work with a court in a community that is progressive and thoughtful and good tax stewardships, stewards. So I really, really want to thank you for the opportunity, but also let you know that is what I try to bring, more than my legal knowledge. I have worked at Kansas Legal Services. I have done access to justice programs, but really I geek out on the efficiency. So hopefully that will satisfy Judge McCabry.
There's no other questions or comments. Thank you very much for your time. We appreciate it. And we'll be adjourned to our 5:30 business meeting.
Thank you for having us.
Thanks for being here.